Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call to order the informational meeting of the City Council. It is March 2nd, 2021. Welcome to those watching online, on TV, or here in person. Let's start with the roll call of the City Council, please.
Council members, Brecky, Erickson, Jensen, Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Okay, we have all eight in attendance, three telephonically. Our first item up is committee and commission reports, Experience Sioux Falls Bid Board. Counselor Brecky.
Just a brief report. It's really much the same as last month. You know, the focus is on the future and, you know, and trying to get two and three years out and try to get those places that are interested in booking their events that far out. And that's where the energy and the marketing is working on. And then Sioux Falls still remains what I called about the top of the bottom in our peer group. You know, we're in a peer group with Omaha, Kansas City, Fargo, Omaha, what did I say? Omaha, Minneapolis. And we consistently are rating in numerous categories at the top of that group, which is unusual for us. Those are our competitors. And we're not usually, you know, we're usually near the top, but we're not usually at the top. And so it's odd, but that has to do with the fact that we're open and we have gained random events. Being open and the people that from most every single event that we've gained that, you know, came out of Minneapolis or somewhere because, you know, we're open and available for business had such a positive experience that we really have gained new customers for the future and the likelihood that they'll come back. So those have been, you know, some small victories. And then just a, on a final note, just an interesting concept. They say that there's, they've been talking about this pent-up demand for hotel rooms. And they believe that is, you know, as this vaccine starts to take hold across the country, that there is pent-up demand and people are really wanting to travel. And so that they expect that that they will have, you know, some bookings, you know, in the near future. And the new term of art that they're using in that industry is called revenge travel, that people want to have their revenge against COVID and are planning their traveling and their vacation, you know, as soon as they, you know, can feel comfortable, which is, you know, in the months ahead pretty soon. So I think they're excited about that and they feel that that's going to happen. They do believe that, you know, that this industry was hit really hard and still is being hit really hard. And that the recovery, it will be, it will have a slow recovery time. Even when people can travel, they don't believe people are, are going to travel immediately. There'll be a slow pickup, they believe, and that it will be probably a full year before recovery. But they're acting as if that's not true over at ESF. They're acting as if that's not true. She said, "We're planning for it, but we're hoping that that's not true." And we're going to push forward enthusiastically and hope that it will rebound sooner than that.
Thank you. Very good. Up next, council remarks. Anyone with council remarks today? On the phones. Hearing none. Let's move on to presentations. Our first presentation is Downtown Sioux Falls, DTSF, and Southeastern Council of Government, SCOG, general updates. It looks like Dustin Powers with Planning is going to lead us off.
Good afternoon. Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. A couple of our partner organizations here this afternoon to give you a presentation and update on where they're at and what they're doing here in the city of Sioux Falls. So I'll turn it over to the first one and then we'll just move into the second one after questions and everything, so.
Sure. Would you like to start with Joe, Downtown Sioux Falls? Welcome, Joe.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk about the activities and impact and the importance of the partnership between DTSF and the city and the importance of DTSF to the community as a whole. I passed out a fact sheet that has downtown by the numbers. I have it here on the overhead, too. So we can come back to this at the end after you've had a chance to kind of absorb some of those numbers. As far as the PowerPoint goes, is that? Got that loaded there? Okay. Okay, there we go. So just zooming out real quick, our mission is to lead the downtown community with diverse experiences, economic growth, and a healthy environment. And we do that with a number of different programs. These are some of the ones that wanted to highlight advocacy. Of course, we are always promoting downtown. Business support, we are, we do that in a number of different ways. Economic development, I guess you could kind of roll into that as well, but gift cards would be an example of that. We host a number of events throughout the year. Of course, 2020 was a bit of an anomaly, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. And then marketing, DTSF is the, we like to think of ourselves as the marketing and communications organization for downtown. And so when it comes to communications, we do that in a number of different ways. Networking is one thing that we promote as well. And I have placemaking up there. You could think of that as place management or beautification as well. We water flowers throughout downtown, have over 100 flower baskets and over 100 planters that we water as well, and sidewalk sweeping and so on. So got a little bit of that laid out on the DTSF by the number sheet. The outcomes that we're trying to drive really are just spread awareness of downtown. We're trying to put a spotlight on it. And one of the ways that we do that is through our marketing and communications. We do that through shoulder season activity and really just trying to make sure that downtown is always active. Of course, enhancing the charm and appeal of downtown is also a top priority for downtown or for DTSF. And then when it comes to accessibility, you know, we're looking at things like walkability when we talk about accessibility. And that was more of a priority in 2019 than 2020, but that's still top of mind for us. And then social capital, that's really expanding the social networks in downtown and making sure that we are building strong connections amongst the various stakeholder groups. So, looking at 2020 and what we did, one of our, you know, when, when you were to rewind about 11 months ago, our top priority was to help businesses thrive, survive and thrive again, really. And one of the ways that we did that was with our financial aid program. We infused 70 different businesses in downtown with $127,000 in grant funding. That was from the Downtown Economic Development Incentive Fund, which was capitalized a few decades ago, back in the 90s, by banks and other community partners. Really helped provide businesses with financial bridge at a time when they didn't have PPP, at a time when they weren't able to apply for disaster loans. And so it was, it was really timely when cash flow was drying up. So that's something that we're really proud of that we did in 2020. We also launched a podcast, and that was a great way for us to still be relevant amongst our stakeholders, connect them with resources that might not be available. We talked to the Small Business Administration, South Dakota Small Business Development Center, the South Dakota Retailers Association. We had Dusty Johnson, Representative Johnson came on to talk about what to expect from Washington as well. And did a lot of other things as well to keep our stakeholders connected, such as virtual town halls. We also launched a Shop Safe campaign because we wanted to make sure that when people were coming downtown, they knew what to expect, that they didn't have to do a whole bunch of due diligence and weren't too terribly worried about coming downtown. And so we, we launched the Shop Safe and Die Safe campaigns. That helped in that regard. We connected customers with businesses better through our website. And we have direct links through our website now to businesses' web pages. Something else we're really proud of that we were able to accomplish in 2020 was we sold over $220,000 worth of gift cards, which really helps put a bullseye on downtown and gets people coming down here shopping. This time of year, first quarter is, can be a tough time, especially for small businesses. And so we've used the amount of gift cards that are unredeemed right now as a way to lure people to downtown, promote specials that they can only get with their gift card. And that's really helped keep businesses thriving in the first quarter of the year. So, once we were able to make sure that businesses were able to survive, we, our other top business issue was to responsibly reactivate downtown, and we did that in a number of different ways. We started out with Moonlight Movies, and those are every Saturday at Faywick Park. We did block parties. We also hosted a number of new events, too. Shop and Stroll was one, where we closed down Phillips Avenue during crazy days. Businesses had some of their best days that they had had in 2020 on that day. There were some that exceeded 2019's sales. Our pedestrian counts exceeded what we saw in 2019 as well. So that event had a very positive impact on downtown. And then Gift Box was a new one. Gift Box is kind of a scavenger hunt meets game show giveaway, if you will. And that was for a three-month-long promotion, brought people downtown that had never been down here before, introduced people to businesses they had no idea existed. So really just trying to, you know, keep the activity up in downtown. Gift Box was a great one that kept people coming down here during the shoulder season from September to November, when it's an otherwise slower time in downtown. And then, of course, our community partnerships is another one that is always very important for DTSF. We were part of Sparks Sioux Falls. We were part of the rebuild program that Zeal spearheaded. And, and of course, we partnered with Levitt for Shop and Stroll. So those community partnerships are very important to DTSF and something that we are always very excited to be a part of each year and look forward to more partnerships as 2021 unfolds. Looking ahead, we, you know, as it relates in particular to our partnership with the city and the impact that we're trying to have, beautification is something that is important. It helps with the charm and the appeal of downtown. And so we have our Clean and Green Team that takes care of that. Most of that is funded through the Business Improvement District. We do take care of the planters for the city, like you see in the photo there, the large round planters. Beautification, we do marketing advocacy. The lower picture there with the demographic information is our State of Downtown Economic Activity Report. And with that, we're trying to be able to provide market data for businesses that are interested in downtown. We also have, don't have it listed on here, but pedestrian counters, that's one of the ways in which we measure our impact. And so that economic activity report coupled with the pedestrian counter information are, can be really key information in getting businesses to come to downtown. Tea and Spice Exchange is one in particular that relied upon this information. And so we're proud to be able to provide that information to potential businesses. And we help out with providing support for trash and recycling. That's a contract that the city holds with a third party, and we provide the customer service side of things. We've also helped enhance the wayfinding in downtown with a grant through the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. But a lot of staff time went into that. They helped cover the capital costs. In regards to downtown development, we have also launched the Downtown Development Committee. I think that was about two years ago. It was one of Mayor Paul Tenhaken's action items in his 100-day plan. Downtown Development Committee was something that had kind of gone by the wayside about around 2012. And so we wanted to bring it back and make that as an advocacy body for downtown development when issues such as tax increment financing comes up, the River Greenway, what have you. We have different issues that we'll take a look at and hope to have more of an impact with that committee as we move forward. And then DTSF is also a part of the Special Events Committee, which has been around for many years. And so we help provide insight with the various stakeholders that sit on that committee. It's primarily city staff, police, Parks Department, Public Works. And so those are some of the ways in which we coordinate with the city. Looking at the year that was, got a couple of significant developments that are up there on that slide. Thankfully, we have, you know, development is going strong downtown still. And obviously, COVID has changed a lot of different things, and some trends are changing. We're seeing in other downtowns that, you know, they're, they're looking at more residential development as opposed to office. Office is a little bit uncertain right now. Some downtowns, some property owners are not here yet that I've heard of, but converting office to residential. I think that we'll bounce back closer to what normal looked like before COVID, based on the way Sioux Falls has responded to the conditions in 2020. So on the development front, I think we're sitting in a pretty good position. Retail commercial is sitting in a good position. We haven't seen vacancy rates spike too much. We do have some vacancies that have come online, but it's nothing too alarming. Foot traffic has been down, though. We saw foot traffic decrease about 25% during the valley of the, of the pandemic. And we, overall, throughout the course of the year, it was about down 20%. But we're seeing it actually rebound quite nicely. We had, we just came off of Burger Battle, and the numbers exceeded, far exceeded 2020's numbers with Burger Battle. And that was, those were pedestrian numbers pre-pandemic in 2020. So we feel pretty good about the activity that's happening in downtown. We've got another promotion that we're ready to launch here on Friday, and, and we think that we've got a pretty positive outlook on 2021. So, you know, the, I think the tourism numbers are something that we're eager to see how that plays out. It's, it definitely helped with businesses this past summer. Unfortunately, it wasn't quite enough for some businesses. We have seen just a handful of closures. There are some businesses that, you know, they, they relied more on the tourism types of customers. But, you know, a lot of the downtown businesses really are able to take advantage of the local market here. And, and a lot of them are, you know, it's, it's a mixed bag, but I feel pretty confident in the situation that we're in with retail in downtown, so. And so I provide a little bit of outlook on the trends as far as DTSF, the organization, goes. We have another partnership with the city that we look to see wrapped up in June, hopefully by the end of June. And that is Art Box, and that's a, a grant that we got through, I say we, I'm including the city, in that it was Russ Sorenson, before he retired, was kind of quarterbacked that grant process. And so DTSF is matching funds from the Bloomberg Philanthropies organization. We're going to wrap traffic utility boxes in downtown, and we're going to source artwork from locals. It's open to anyone, and so we're working with a lot of different organizations. Sioux Falls Arts Council is helping with that. And trying to reach out to maybe some uncommon artists that might not otherwise have an opportunity like this. So we're, we're pretty excited with, what, what's going to come with Art Box. DTSF is also looking to do some long-term strategic planning that will get underway this spring, hopefully conclude by midsummer. And really trying to strengthen the organization through a strong strategic plan so that we can grow with downtown as it grows. Because there's, as I, you all are well aware, just a heightened interest in downtown. And so we want to make sure that we are leading the charge on that, and the strategic plan will certainly help. And we will continue, of course, with a lot of our standard programs, retail support, advocacy, and partnerships as well. So I've been talking long enough. You have the fact sheet. I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Perhaps we should do questions for Joe before we move on to SCOG while it's fresh. Would, would that be preferred? Okay, let's just open it up. Any questions or comments for DTSF? And for the record, it's Joe Bachelor, Executive Director, Downtown Sioux Falls.
I skipped that part, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
Sorry. Any questions on the phone? Anything in the room? Is there anything we, we can do as a, a city that you would be looking for, for infrastructure, that you think would be things that we should be thinking about or anything else?
Well, I think-
Or that you might be hearing?
I'm sorry?
That you may be hearing from, you know, your stakeholders.
Well, I know that the Sioux, the River Greenway is always top priority, I think, but it's a major undertaking, too. Tens of millions, if not more than that, are gonna, is what it's going to take to be able to complete that. I think that that would really help enhance the downtown experience. What we're hearing from our stakeholders is that, you know, to, if, if we, they would like DTSF to be stronger advocates for the river and, and be able to, if that could be more of a recreational amenity in downtown, I think that that would be much appreciated. I know the city has a lot of other infrastructure projects as well. And, you know, it's all, it's all about time and money. And I wish we could wave a wand and just make things the way we've envisioned them. But I think the other one that will make a big difference in downtown is once Phillips Avenue is reconstructed between Ninth Street and Sixth Street. So I know that's something that's been in the, in the plans for a long time. And it's just kind of one of those things, when, when it's bubbles up to the top, then, then it'll get done. And I think there's plans for that in 2023 or something like that. So, infrastructure-wise, you know, I think Phillips and the River Greenway would be fantastic. You know, we're always trying to advocate for walkability. And I know the city is doing a great job of updating some of those ADA ramps around downtown. You know, the other thing that would be fantastic when the opportunities present themselves are to provide more street trees downtown. That's something that I hear from the residents in particular. But that's kind of an infrastructure thing. It's sometimes, you know, the, the old infrastructure was kind of more of a, you know, trying to plant a tree into, into a thimble. And now we've got a nice big, nice big trenches to plant the trees in where they can prosper. And so those are kind of the top-of-mind projects that I'm hearing from the stakeholders.
Great. Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Just one quick question. Talk to me a little bit about when Phillips Avenue was closed, just the perception of the businesses downtown. I know it can be controversial at times because it seems like you have to be able to park right outside of your business or, you know, you don't stop. I mean, it's crazy how spoiled we are here in South Dakota, and oftentimes it's the weather. But talk to me a little bit about the business perception of that, how it worked, if that's something that you and the city plan to partner and, and do again. I personally love it. I mean, it's, it's much like kind of an area in Minneapolis where you can walk around that area and have just this really open area. But I didn't know if others were enjoying it as much as I thought of it.
Right. So that came out of the responses that were seen in other downtowns. And I think Mike Grigsby brought it up internally with the city. It's something we had talked about with stakeholders for years before that, but it just, people weren't there mentally. But when, you know, the pandemic came, it was like, well, the perfect opportunity to give it a try. So we talked to businesses af, excuse me, after we opened the street back up the following week and received an overwhelmingly positive response. I was amazed at how many businesses were in support of that and really liked it. There, there were a lot that were kind of like, eh, you know, sort of indifferent to it, but no real complaints about lack of parking. We tried to do, be as proactive as we could and put out sandwich board signs, you know, directing people to parking structures. And that really seemed to help. People figured it out, you know, when they realized they couldn't turn on Phillips and park right in front of the business they were going to, they, they figured it out pretty quick. So it was fun to try that experiment, very low cost. And I think we, you know, we, we proved it as an important concept in downtown.
Perfect. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Okay. Thanks for having me.
Up next is Southeast Council of Government, SCOG. Welcome, Lynn.
Hi, Lynn Keller Forbes, I'm the Executive Director of SCOG, Southeastern Development Foundation, and also Dakota Business Finance. So I wanted to run through 2020 with you and our partnership with the city. We've got a lot of exciting things going on with you. First of all, SCOG serves the six southeastern counties in South Dakota. We're one of six planning districts. In 2020, for our member cities and counties, we assisted them with securing over $80 million in low-interest loans and grants. Of that, Sioux Falls was a recipient of $30 million. Some of the projects I want to highlight that we're particularly proud of for 2020 was kind of the worst kept secret in town, which was the EDA grant that we helped secure for 1.9 million to expand Foundation Court II Marion Road for the Amazon project. That was one of the first CARES Act grants in the nation that was awarded. We also helped secure 18.5 million in low-interest loans to assist with the five-year expansion of the water reclamation facility. So we're in phase two of that. And then the third project that we worked extensively with city staff on is trying to get funding from FEMA to purchase additional homes in the Rose Lotta area. We were successful in being able to secure over a million dollars for that. The intent was to demolish seven homes. My understanding is that some of those homeowners have now had a change of heart. So I would guess somewhere in the four to five range is what will come out of that grant. And we're continuing to work with other homeowners as those homes are identified. I also run the Southeastern Development Foundation, which was originally started as a gap financing revolving loan fund for businesses. But we expanded it to housing in 2004, and we've done some really neat things with the city of Sioux Falls. Jeff Eckloff and his staff are fantastic to work with. One of the things that we started doing within the last couple of years is that you often acquire homes as the city for different reasons. It could be to expand a road. It could be because you need to tear them down to create a stormwater detention project or for whatever reason. And this happened to be a twin home that was over by Augustana that you acquired and were going to tear down. And they called us and said, "Do you want it?" So we cut it in half and relocated it up into a northwest part of town. And we left them as two single-family homes. And we ended up renovating the inside of them and, and sold both of those individually. Just wanted to give you kind of an idea. This is what they looked like before. By Augustana, they'd had 20 years of college kids in them, so they needed a little love. So this is what it looked like after we were done. We go in and try to do a nice job. We upgrade usually all the roofs, the furnaces, all of those kinds of things. So whoever buys them long-term really should be getting a home that is ready to be lived in and shouldn't have any unforeseen expenses coming. The living room, and we, so we go in and repaint them and do all of that kind of stuff. The other project that we did that was really exciting was the Boys and Girls Club over on Sneevy. The Boys and Girls Club relocated to a new location. They were unsuccessful in being able to sell the building. And so the city and, and the Southeastern Development Foundation partnered together. You provided the funds to acquire the facility and also demolish it. And then we provided the funds to put in the new infrastructure. And there'll be 24 lots that'll be going out there. You also gave us three houses. These are from the first eight that you purchased with the city's non-federal dollars. And we took three of them. Three of them were movable. We have relocated them to that area. You can kind of see it on the left-hand side up towards the top. That's where those three are. Excel was over giving me power today, so we'll move on those pretty quickly. Two of them will be able to renovate fairly quickly and sell fairly quickly, and one of them needs pretty extensive renovations. The other nine objects you see on there indicate governor's houses. So we'll put nine governor's houses in there this year as well. I hope that we'll be able to go in next year and finish up this development and get out of the neighborhood. This is what those governor's houses will look like when we put them over there in Edward Circle. And then the last project you did is you had five houses that you also purchased over in the Holbrook Palisades area. And that, again, was for drainage purposes. We took all of those. They were all split foyers. Not a huge fan of split foyers, just easier to have one level. And so this is the before picture. And then you can see up in the left-hand corner is when we got it moved to the site. I always warn the neighbors that- I always warn the neighbors that we are bringing in these houses and that they're going to look ugly. And then we will make them look better. And so on the bottom is kind of the, is the after picture and hoping to get it painted. And then we'll continue on with the work on that. So we have actually, this is our, our development that we have up there. We put in a lot of governor's houses. And I like to get these houses from you because I like to put them in between the governor's houses. So you don't have a cookie cutter neighborhood. So all the ones that are kind of in a yellow color, those are eight different houses. Five of them came from you. The other ones just came from individuals. One came from a corporation that was going to redevelop the land commercially. And they gave me the house to move. Another one came from an individual for the same reason. They wanted to redevelop and put a different house on. And then we are starting a brand new partnership, very similar to this with the Sioux Falls School Board. And so we're hoping to take a house that they've got as well and move it up there. This is just an example of a few others. A private individual actually gave us this house. We moved it in, warned the neighbors. And this is what it looked like when it was done. Someone told me, whether this is true or not, that for every house you save, you, in, that you don't rebuild new, it saves you about 200 trees. And so if you start counting up the trees, we're saving a lot of trees. This also is another house that some individual gave us that we redeveloped and is under contract up there too. If you're out looking for a house right now, the market's kind of crazy. So we're not having any trouble getting rid of them. So COVID was a difficult year personally for a lot of people. But if you were in government, there were a lot of resources that were available because of COVID. Seacog got a $400,000 grant and we hired a couple of very seasoned loan officers, commercial retired loan officers, Dave Esland and Kurt Zaski, to our team to help go through our portfolio and assist businesses and just trying to assess where they were at and what was the best route for them to take after COVID. We also got a $4.4 million grant to recapitalize our loan fund and cover some admin. And we're very close to having all of that out on the street. We were also instrumental in working with the state of South Dakota with their dollars that they pass through from the CARES Act down to the cities. We entered into a contract with the Bureau of Finance and Maintenance. And all of the technical questions that the cities and counties had about, is this eligible or not eligible? Those all flowed through the planning districts. 207 million was distributed to cities and counties in South Dakota through this program. And the city of Sioux Falls received 47.7 of those. So almost a quarter of them went to you guys. And then finally, our loan programs had record-breaking years. It was really important that people were able to access equity in some of their buildings. So we did a lot of loans with cash out refinancing. We did a lot of straight working capital loans just to try to get them through. There was CARES Act funding where if you had an SBA 504 loan, you ended up with six months of payments made on your behalf. We had record-low interest rates, 2.2% for 25 years fixed. Just to kind of give you an idea of volume, we had 59 loan approvals last year for to go to Business Finance, which does SBA 504 lending compared to 28 the previous year. And then the Southeastern Development Foundation almost put almost 9 million on the street, 46 loans. Again, that's really unprecedented for us. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about projects that we've worked on together or anything else.
Thank you, Lynn. Questions? Comments? Counselor Starr?
I, I skipped Joe with his big event today, but I know this week you had a big anniversary. So how long have you been with Seacog? And I promise not to sing. I don't know about the rest of the group.
Twenty years yesterday.
We've seen some amazing things from Seacog. So thank you for the, the work that you do do. I know one of the things that we've seen as a council, and it really stood out during your presentation. You talked about working with the neighbors to understand what we were doing. And we've seen a lot of pushback on rezonings and, and different things at the council. People understanding that just because you live in multifamily housing, or I spend a lot of time with neighbors in the Boys and Girls Club area of town. From your experience, what are we missing to not communicate with the community? Or is it something we're not going to ever be able to get past because it's just, people are protective of their home and their neighborhood and concerned when they don't know what's going on?
I think there's always some sort of the fear of the unknown. Anytime you talk affordable housing, we like to say workforce housing because affordable connotates sometimes of you'll get people like, what, what kind of people are going to move into my neighborhood? So there's some fear of, you know, I had some people at the, at the open houses that would come up and say, what are you going to do to my property values? And I would say, actually, my houses will probably appraise at higher values than yours will. So we're probably going to bring up the neighborhood and all of that kind of stuff as well. So I think it's hard to engage the public. You, how do you reach them? First of all, you send them a letter, right? And the people that are unhappy about it are the ones that show up. And the ones that are happy about it, they don't show up. And I've never been able to kind of figure out how do you reach that? And how do you gauge whether or not that's the neighborhood or if it's just the 10 people? But we had an open house when we were going to demolish that. And some people came and said, you know, I was very opposed to this when I got here. But we had pictures, we talked to them. We said, go, go drive through our other neighborhoods. I mean, these are, these are nice homes. These are young professional people. These are retired people. These are, you know, these are families. And go look at their homes. They take nice care of their homes. And a lot of them took us up on that and then came back and said, okay, now, now I don't feel like you are going to destroy my neighborhood. This is going to be a good thing. So I think, and our other goal is, like I said, to get in, get it all done, and then get back out too, so that they're not living in this construction for more than two years.
Do you see more of the pushback? Or is the governor's house programs a lot more acceptable in neighborhoods that people have seen more of them? I know sitting in, in one of them at the fair a couple of years ago, it was surprising the people who came in and didn't realize the quality or they were, you know, again, some of the same things you talked about. But do you see that, is that a different pushback than moving a house in?
I, I don't, I mean, they're very well built. They're two-by-six construction. They are not manufactured homes. They're so well-built and so highly energy efficient that they have air exchangers in them in order to, to operate the whole air circulation stuff. So they're harder to place in areas that have covenants or won't let you move a house in. So that's why we end up buying, you know, big chunks of land that don't have covenants that we're able to then put in these developments. Land is an issue for us. It's going to continue to be an issue. I've got another 7.7 acres in the northwest part of town that we'll be putting infrastructure in probably this summer for another 25 lots. But if we're going through at the pace we're going through these, you know, in two years, we'll be out of there. And so then it's, it's the next thing. I've got, got more people looking for lots. So any partnership we can get with you guys and to help kind of buy down that, whether that's infrastructure or whatever seems to make the most sense for you, that's always greatly appreciated because it does help reduce the price of those lots.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Any questions on the phone? Remind me, with the homes you sell, do you have silent seconds? Or how does the financing work for home buyers in your-
So they get conventional financing. Typically, we're seeing FHA financing. A lot of times when I'm doing a governor's house, I will also have a grant that I've received through South Dakota Housing called, through the Housing Opportunity Fund. So for instance, on the ones we did last year for governor's houses, the three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, all the appliances, all of that, we listed those for 185. And then we had from South Dakota Housing, 15,000 in grant funding against those. So their mortgage really was for 170. And then South Dakota Housing takes a soft second for the 15,000, and that's forgivable over five years. So at the end of five years, if they still are in the house, it's completely wiped away. If they sell it in year three, then they would have to pay $6,000 left or those kinds of things.
Do your buyers have to income qualify?
Well, they have to qualify before they qualify for the governor's house. So if they are having difficulty, I'm, I'm not seeing them because we also work for the South Dakota Housing and we do all of their under, underwriting for their governor's houses. So when they come to us, one of the requirements is that they need to have a lender onboard. And so if, if, if they're doing that and they're having issues, it probably wouldn't be, I wouldn't see that.
But do they have, in the other direction, is there caps, for example? You have to-
Oh, yeah. It's all income qualified. It's asset qualified. It's 80% of median household income, up to three. So I'm, I'm going to kind of round here a little bit. I would say for a family of three or more, you can't make more than 60-some thousand. And if it's two or more, it's 56,000. And if you're a single person, it's 48,000 and some odd change. And those are updated every year about April.
And when you referenced covenants, I take it that would be neighborhoods where you have, you have to have X amount of brick or it has to be so many square footage?
You could even overcome most of that. What you can overcome is a lot of covenants say that they have to be stick-built onsite.
Say that again?
They have to be stick-built onsite. So you can't move them in. You couldn't take a custom touch home in. You couldn't bring this in or any of those kinds of things.
Even if you bring it in and put it on the foundation, it has to be built onsite?
That's what a lot of them will say.
Got it. Okay. Interesting. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. Thanks for the presentation.
Appreciate our partnership.
Thanks for your work. That brings us to our second presentation, Tud Hill Park House Project Status Update. And Director Don Kearney is stepping forward, Director of Parks, to start us off.
Good afternoon, councilors. Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. If you remember, back in snowy December, we had an opportunity to discuss the Tud Hill Park Resolution to surplus the house. If you remember, the council removed the house from the surplus resolution and asked us to work with the neighborhood to come back with a modified proposal to address the house and develop a plan so that we could address the house long-term. And so we've got some guests with us today as well. We've got a little background that I'll provide, but also have Sarah DeWitt and Lance Meyerink. Sarah has agreed to provide the design concepts for the interior and exterior portions of the house. So she'll be talking about that and then turn it over to Lance to talk about the proposed landscape plan as part of that project. Kathy English is with us. She is really leading the fundraising committee. And then I asked Kelby to also come up and talk a little bit about the gifting agreement. I know you guys are familiar with those, but just kind of want to step through that because ultimately you'll need to approve that agreement as well. And then obviously take questions. So following that council meeting, we had a group of interested individuals that agreed to serve on this, what we call the Tud Hill House Resource Working Group. At our first meeting, we established three committees. One was the Design Committee, one was the Fundraising Committee, and then another one was the Gifting Agreement, our 501(c)(3) Committee, basically working on who are we going to have an agreement with? And I'm happy to report that there is now going to be a new Tud Hill House Neighborhood Association as a result of this work. And ultimately, our, our plan is to have the agreement with the Neighborhood Association. So thanks to the folks to help us put that together. So since we broke in, in December from that meeting, we had, we've had five resource group meetings. We've also had a neighborhood meeting just this last week to share a lot of the similar information that you'll, you're here, you're here tonight. So the folks from the neighborhood wanted to chime in on what we were proposing to do. They had an opportunity to do that. And then obviously, we're before you today. So here's a timeline that we're on with this project. The, the dates above the next steps is kind of where we've been. The variety of different meetings that we've had, the, the committee meetings that have happened in between our regular resource group meetings. And our next steps include, if it's ready, be able to go to the Park Board in April within a gifting agreement. Come to the council without a gifting agreement as well. And then at that point, once with the estimated completion of the fundraising by the end of July, hopefully start construction in September and then have the project substantially complete by the end of March. And also, I like to acknowledge and thank Counselor Breckie for her involvement. She's been at all the meetings, been very helpful in facilitating those discussions. And so appreciate her involvement in this project as well. So with that, now is your show and tell regarding the proposed project. And turn it over to Sarah DeWitt and talk you through the design.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, I have one more slide. We thought we'd give you a little idea of what was done when it went from being a caretaker's house to an actual rentable space through the Parks and Rec Department. So in '93, there were renovations to make it available for the public to use. An accessible entry and restroom. We closed in the covered porch, updated doors and windows, updated the electrical, and then added a deck that, that's there now. So now we can turn it over to Sarah. Sorry. Sarah?
Welcome, Sarah.
I want to do that. I don't speak quite loud enough, do I? Thank you for having us here. This has been a fun project. And I've gotten to meet new people that I have never met in the city of Sioux Falls. So I've really enjoyed that. We've also been in contact with the park, what would you call it, landscape, groundskeeper? His family has been in contact with us with much, many stories and some other people. So it's been very interesting. We can say thank you to Adam Nygaard. Is that from, from the museum? He's provided a lot of the historical slides and information. And this, of course, was how the house looked when it was turned over to the city. And it was called Otanka, which most, we never knew that. You go next one. This is the northeast view. What you're looking at up in the upper left is the deck as it was done in the 90s. And what our proposal is, it started with Alex Hallback, who he said he would like to see, and we all agreed with him, that we'd like to approach the house as it was originally intended. And that is where the porch was, where I have the brick and the porch there now. What we're doing is opening up the porch with double-hung windows. So it's more reminiscent of a McKinnon Park home, that they would have enclosed a porch there. And by doing so, it welcomes you up that way. It gives you a front entryway. Thank you. Thank you. From the inside, that is the best view. And right now, it's been closed off. And so that's really lovely for the people who have an event there. You'll be inside and you can see the beautiful view of the park. So the home, a number of the, you go ahead, next one. Sorry about that. A number of the windows actually are intact. And so it's amazing that they're in such good condition. So we hope to keep all the original ones that we can and use aluminum storms on the outside just to preserve those. And we're, our goal is to give easy maintenance to the park department. So along with that, you can see that there's a metal roof now. We want to restore it to a cedar shake-looking roof. But we're thinking that if we can afford to, we like to do steel shingles that look like cedar shake because of course it's a 50-year roof and reminiscent of historical quality. On this view, you notice at the top left, that's where the ramp is now. It's really not to code at this point, and it also is not very attractive from the neighbors. So what we're trying to do is accommodate a true handicap ramp and also improve the view from the neighbors. And that's what this is showing with the ramp up to the lean-to door. So it's providing two things from this angle. So that's the ramp that we're trying to remove. And then, of course, this is the view from where you drive up now, for which would be the handicap parking. We are adding decorative railing. It's not required by code, but we think it improves the look of it. And we do like to increase the safety of the place if we can. The new three entryways, we're doing in poured concrete with brick accents. They aren't historical, and we want them to look different on purpose so that they know that they're not historical. But we think that it will, helps with the ambiance of the home, especially as a number of events that people use. There's a lot of photo opportunities with that. So this again shows the porch that's been enclosed, opened up with the double-hung windows, the new large porch entry, and of course, the existing one too. This is a planned view. We call this looking down in the main area. Underneath the vinyl flooring that was installed in the 90s, the oak floor is actually intact. We will probably have to refinish it. With the area that's called the front porch, of course, that was enclosed and that we're trying to open up with the double-hung windows and then redo the entry there, that original one floor is intact also. And so we will expose that so as to show the original architectural part of the home. Above that space, the original beadboard has been removed, which we will replace there too. Also on the main level, they had added sheet rock overall, possibly part of what they did with electrical. We've removed small sections and it appears the plaster ceiling is intact. And so we will be restoring that. Between, can you show where the opening that we're going to add by the fireplace? Between, by the fireplace that we're going to open up? Yeah, right there. There's been, a little further down. I bet your mouth is, next one, yeah. So that right now, that's closed off. And there's been many requests because of the nature of the events is to open that space up so you have more visual connectivity and better flow for people. We're redoing the handicap bathroom to be up to today's codes and also in a style appropriate for it and heavy-duty materials for commercial. The opening into the kitchen, can you show them that where the, there you go. The opening now is only about three feet. We're opening it up to about eight feet to allow better flow from the back entry area, which was a lean-to. And then we are providing more countertop space and a large fridge for the caterers that, you know, whether it's a family catering it or a professional caterer, they, they need that. It is not a full kitchen. It's more of a serving space. And we are redoing the flooring there into a heavy-duty cement tile, just so it's easier maintenance for everybody. On the outside, I don't think you can see it from this angle. But can you go on the outside lean-to? We're going to have an outdoor serving area on the patio too. Yeah, that's right. So that shows the opening on the left-hand side that we'll be adding. The opening on the right is there, but we're adding casing to it to make it more in the style of the original home. Move the next one. So this is the second story. The controversy- So this is the second story, the controversial second story, that you have to crawl through a hole to go see. It's quite lovely. All the bedrooms are intact. The plaster requires some hard elbow grease to scrub off the paint and repaint it, but it is quite lovely and it's a big paint job. The flooring, interesting enough, we talked to a specialist in the wood flooring, and originally, when it was an 1880s farmhouse or homestead, the rough planking would have been the flooring. And as they upgraded it, they added a 3/8-inch wood tongue and groove. So we are, one of our goals is to provide extended and expansive use of the property. One of those would be the second floor, in the sense that the two rooms could be dressing rooms for wedding events, which of course, are very popular there. We don't feel there's a need for that small bedroom, so what we'd like to do is have it set up like a homestead bedroom, so that when children use the space, we're hoping to expand its use, maybe storybook hour, crafting. We want to take this not just as it's been used, but to expand on its use both year-round and for the types of groups of people. If we have this investment in this historical property, we want to really use it by many people. So the small bedroom, we're probably going to pull back and allow the original wood floor that a homesteader would have had, and, you know, maybe a rope bed, chamber pot, the way we actually used to live when we did settle this part of the country. The sewing room is intact, which is quite interesting, because most people historically don't realize the value on fabrics, that people made their own clothes, and of course, storing those fabrics and clothing was a very big thing. And the bathroom, all the plumbing will be utilized too, and we'll have historical fixtures there. The original light fixtures are all there, and we will be reusing those also, adding some appropriate sconces throughout. So that's the intention for the bathroom. So as I mentioned earlier, we're preserving all of those original windows because they are in very good condition. We will be repainting them and adding those storms on the existing windows. The siding is a big question mark. As we remove it, we have bids on both, we're hoping that when we remove the siding, that we can restore the existing. That's, who knows? But we also have a bid to do cement board siding if that becomes the need. So the chimney, we will be keeping it, just tuck pointing it. You can see that's a good side-by-side view of what the original porch was, what happened to it, and then, of course, what we're going to be doing to it. Those are some of the fun light fixtures on the second floor. Okay, now, this is a really beautiful part by Lance.
Welcome, Lance. If you could introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Yep, my name is Lance Myerink. I live in the All Saints neighborhood, and I'm happy to help out and provide my expertise to helping think through how to approach the outdoor spaces. So this is the conceptual landscape plan that we've put together. It's oriented with up being north, so north of this plan would be the existing Tut Hill Park Gardens and Tut Hill Park. To the left would be the accessible parking. To the bottom or the south is the existing neighborhoods or the neighbors, so the property line is a fence line. I'd like to point out a few things. First is some of the design of the interior of the home necessitated removing the steps to the basement, because it allowed for a bigger bathroom and some other uses. So the proposal is to have a cellar door to access the basement. That necessitates getting rid of the deck. What we're proposing is a ground-level concrete patio. That's the large patio that you see where the deck is now. That has some advantages. It allows for that space to kind of have a sense of space, to enclose it a little bit more, make it feel a little bit more private, a little bit less visible from the neighbors, which I think is a huge advantage. And it also allows for that nice big access to the basement that the parks could use. You can see there's two existing accessible walkways, or walkways from the park. The one on the left is just a walkway that leads to the park that's accessible. There's also the one where you see that steps to the park. That's another walkway that leads like to the gazebo area in the more formal gardens. So we're definitely proposing to connect our landscape to the beautiful grounds that already exist there. You can see on the bottom, there's an accessible walkway from the parking that's going to lead up to the ramp, so that you have accessible access to the house. We're also providing a walkway, so that there's an accessible walkway over to the concrete patio. I think that's another huge advantage to having a ground-level space as an outdoor living space that's accessible, rather than having to go through the house to get to the grounds, or to the nice patio space in the back. At the bottom of the plan, you can see that we're proposing some landscape plantings to help buffer the views, both for the neighbors to the house, and then from the people that are using the house and the patio and the grounds, to screen views to the neighbors, just to add a little bit of privacy there. In the bottom right corner of the patio, you see three trees. Those are existing Japanese tree lilacs. We're proposing to keep those, they're beautiful trees. But there's some lilacs now that border the deck. When we drop this down to ground level, those lilacs are going to be high enough that we're going to end up screening views to the park, which we don't want to do. So we're proposing to remove those, do lower plantings. And then also, you can see in the top left, we're proposing a secondary outdoor living space, a little bit more of a formal patio with like a pergola structure. I think it would be an amazing space for pictures and for, you know, just a secondary gathering space. The views from that patio to the rest of the grounds would be amazing. Over on the right, away from the pedestrian areas, we're proposing a pollinator garden. We'd like to have native pollinating plants there and use that as a teaching opportunity. And then there's a space over by the accessible parking to have a teaching garden. That could be used for lots of different things. One year, it could be for agricultural plants or something else. It's just an opportunity space for the parks as they see fit. I think that pretty much covers it, other than to say that the goal of this is to take advantage of what's already a really beautiful home and a beautiful park, and make sure that everything that we do just accentuates that, and to utilize native plantings whenever possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Did we want to move on to the fundraising portion next? I'm assuming that is Kathy.
Good evening. My name is Kathy English, and I'm a member of the fundraising committee. I'm part of the Resource Group. As you can see, the members of this committee represent various areas of the city, and I'm very excited to share with you that through their hard work and the generosity of the many people in this city, we are now at the point, our fund in the Sioux Falls Community Foundation, we are now at the point where we can fulfill our original commitment. That is, we have funds to re-side the house. If we have to put new siding, we have funds to re-side the house, replace the windows, and do the roof. So moving forward, we're working on a grant or a couple of grants, and we're still out fundraising. We have quite a bit of time yet. We're very excited, because once we got into this project, those of us on the Resource Committee could see such potential for the city in this house and the surrounding gardens, that we are committed to moving forward and hopefully raising the funds to fulfill our dream that Sarah and Lance presented to us. We have, you can show, we are working with the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. We put out a funding letter to the neighborhood. We put the end date as May 15th, because we wanted to move things forward as fast as we could. But actually, our end goal for fundraising will be July 31st. And you can see there, we've gotten some wonderful publicity. The South Dakota Public Broadcasting put out a video. I'd encourage all of you to look at that. And we're getting some publicity in some neighborhood magazines and in, I just got a call from, what is it, Dakota?
South Dakota Life.
South Dakota Life. So we're getting some good publicity. I think that will help us as well, and we're working with various historical societies within the state. Any questions?
Don, did you want a wrap, maybe? And then we'll go to questions? Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Director Attorney.
I would just like to close with have Kelby talk a little bit. He's been working with Alex a little bit on the gifting agreement, just to talk about the mechanics of that, and then obviously, open it up for questions.
Welcome, Kelby.
Good afternoon, City Council. Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. We have got an original draft or an initial draft of gifting agreement that we've shared with Alex Halbeck, who's working on that as part of the Resource Group. The gifting agreement will be with the Tut Hill Park Neighborhood Association, which has just recently been formed. So that's who the gifting agreement will be with. It will be a conditional gifting agreement, essentially like the one that we did with Sioux Empire Baseball for the grandstands out at Harmiron, where we defined the project and then put conditions both on the gifter and on us through that gifting agreement. It's a little different than the ones that you've seen recently, like with the Kirby Dog Park, where they gifted the funds to the city and then the city did the project. This one's just the opposite, where they're actually gifting the improvements to us. We do hope that we can have that in front of the park board in April, but it's one of those things we want to make sure that we have right, and especially if the fundraising is going until July, we've got some time to make sure that that gifting agreement is appropriate for both parties.
Glad to take any questions.
Okay, let's open up to questions. Counselor Jensen.
I have three that are kind of related.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Nobody's counting. Thank you.
So what, as you guys laid it out, do you guys have an idea of what the cost is going to be for the house that Sarah presented and then the landscaping that Lance presented?
Yeah, Sarah's done the cost estimate, so I'll let her answer that question.
Okay. And as you're coming up, you know, where are you guys at today for the fundraising? And then the third question would probably be for Don, is what's the city going to be putting in for funds? So those are all kind of related, but that's all I have.
Well, it's been a little more difficult than I anticipated, getting together a budget just because of the time of year and how busy these contractors are right now. So we have an estimated budget of about $260,000. I personally feel that we should probably just tell ourselves $300,000, just because the cost of building right now has gotten astronomical. There shouldn't, there's just some question marks for that. It's a timing issue, it's opening up the borders, having access, all of that. But that's the number I've come up with so far. But I can't see it being higher than that. But that is encompassing the whole home and the patios and the exterior. It doesn't include the plants, so, pretty good, actually. Was there was another part of the question?
Yep. Where are you guys at today for fundraising? Maybe Kathy could.
We're probably about $110,000.
$110,000, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Our original bid was $106,000 for that, so I'm saying we're there, and we've got promises we haven't seen, but right now, it's $110,000.
Thank you, Kathy. And then, Don, what's the city going to put into this?
Yeah, we're not asking, we're not, Don, it's just coming back to the City Council to ask for any additional dollars. We basically targeted the dollars we would have had to spend to have the abatement done and the just tipping fees at the landfill and those kinds of costs. And so we've really asked them to really pay for the actual cost of the improvements. And so we think that's going to be in that $25,000 range where the cost for the abatement of the asbestos and that kind of stuff, so. But we'll just use our operating budget to cover that.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Were you done? I'm sorry, Counselor. Okay. Probably for Don, I would say. Talk to me a little bit about the programmed uses of the Tut Hill Home prior to the storm damage.
The program, excuse me, the programmed uses would have been for weddings, you know, showers, birthday parties, reunions, you know, essentially the, kind of where the bride and grooms, the wedding party essentially got ready before the actual wedding out in the gardens, and some receptions, those types of things. So, you know, various clubs have rented it over the years, that kind of stuff, so.
Okay. And then what's the plan going forward when the renovations are done?
Well, I think there's some, the Resource Group Committee has talked about potentially doing some other things to program it and use it more than what we've used it in the past. You know, maybe having the library come in, maybe some historical interpretation with the Silan Heritage Museums doing some work. But I think largely, we think it'll be used for a lot of the same things it's been used in the past, but with the new features being added, you know, it certainly could be more attractive for additional events there on a year-round basis.
Okay. And then one more question, if I can. We've heard, I mean, incredible people here speaking today, as well as the people that are involved on these committees and task force, all come with a wealth of knowledge that we're so grateful to have access to that, really. Talk to me a little bit about the in-kind work and/or naming rights with any of this as we move forward. Are we receiving in-kind based on some of the members that are able to be there? And then are we offering naming rights? Are we not a part of that? How does that work?
I'm not of any, aware of any naming rights being considered for any of the work. I would have to defer to Sarah about if there's any in-kind work that would be done with the contractors that she's talked to.
Because there's a lot of really great people in that neighborhood that are, I mean, they've really stepped forward. I mean, even Sarah's design and Lance's work too, I don't know, you know, that's a great resource to have. I mean, I personally, the naming thing, I just asked because there's so many people involved, but I think obviously, that would take away from that historical preservation of saying, you know, slapping, you know, the Christine Erickson House by Tut Hill, you know, or whatever it is. I mean, we don't want to see something like that. I think that really takes away from the historical component of it. But I just wasn't sure in regards to some of that in-kind. Sarah, if you want to address any of that?
Just me. Just me, $30,000 worth, that's all. No, the naming rights, I don't know that we should change the name, but one might want to consider calling it the Tut Hill Howe or Howe Tut Hill Home. One of the discoveries for me was the importance of the history of William Howe. It just so resonates with all of us. The 14-year-old who immigrates to New York City and makes a living, trains himself, ends up homesteading in Wisconsin, serving in the Civil War, marrying a widow, adopting her kids, coming to Sioux Falls, and that was his dream, is that homestead and building that home.
Right.
And so, it's not so much naming rights, but now that you mention it, I would not mind if there were a way to include the Howe name with it.
And do you know too, if I can just do a quick follow-up, if there's any intent of making sure that the historical background of this home is somehow presented, whether it's, I mean, a binder, a book, or whatever?
I think it's very key, very important. As I said, Adam did so much work, and we've had so many great conversations on it. We had discussed a brass plaque as other plaques around the city, which of course, I love reading about, and I think is so wonderful. You know, it would be nice to do some art on the walls with some of the historical newspaper articles that Adam has found. That type of thing would be really lovely.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you also, I mean, I know you've given your heart and soul and given a lot of in-kind as well, so thank you for that and for those that are all involved in making this project come. It will be a nice asset and not an eyesore. Thank you.
Counselor Breckie?
If I could just answer one question. There was, a naming issue did come up when we got into the gardening, you know, the landscaping, that, you know, as we go down the fundraising path and we get closer to the end, like you noticed, there was the teaching garden and the interpretive gardens. We did just have, you know, an open green light-thinking chat about, you know, maybe we could give naming rights to that, some of the teaching garden or something like that, in order to get those last funds so that we could do the entire project. So I don't want to take that off the table, that's been part of the discussion, but, you know, it was just in a green light-thinking mode.
And thank you for that clarification. And in my mind, that's completely different than calling the home, I don't even want to use a business name, but you know what I mean, the ABC Tut Hill House. It's very different than selling benches or planting a tree in memory of someone, or, you know, places that maybe you took your kids or grain kids that mean something to you, and so you're willing to pay for all the plants, and so there's a little teeny-tiny thing that says, "Thanks, Lance, for buying all these plants," or something, you know, I mean, I don't know. But that's very different than some.
There wasn't any discussion about that, but I think if there were, it would go just like it did today. Everybody's really pretty committed to the history of it and just doing a really good accurate job of depicting that, and understanding that it was called the Otanka area as well, and making all the Otanka name, the Tut Hill name, and the Howe name all, you know, predominantly descriptive of it, because that is now the history that we understand it to be and we want to preserve.
Questions on the phone? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who has volunteered their, their time up to this point to bring this forward. Lots of progress has been made. It looks great. The house is much more presentable, or at least the, the plans are much more presentable than what it has been for several years now. I'm especially happy to hear Director Kearney say that at this point, he does not anticipate the Parks Department to come before the city council requesting additional funds. I think this is an example of a great public-private relationship and what can be done in projects such as, such as this. So I, again, I thank everybody. And I, and I say that because, as I've stated many times before, we have a lot of parks across the city, and some parks are in great need of improvements. And the Hayward Park, which we've been addressing here lately, is, is a good example of that. So my goal's always been to bring equity throughout the city, so us not having to establish additional funding for this project greatly assists us in meeting that goal of bringing equity throughout the city of Sioux Falls. I do have a question. I noticed on the plans, there were steps going from the house to the floral gardens. I didn't see any type of a walkway. Is there a ADA compliant walkway from the house to the north, to the gardens? Or does an individual have to walk around the south end and west end to access the gardens? Or wheel themselves around the south end and west end to reach the gardens?
This is Lance Myrink. I can answer that. So if you're in the house.
Could you just come closer to the mics?
Sure. If you're in the house and you need accessible access to go to the gardens to the north, you would have to go down the ramp that's on the south side of the house. And then from there, you could either take the accessible walkway and go through the concrete patio, and then there's a sidewalk that goes over, and then you'd be able to access that way. But yeah, from the house, down to the grounds, we are proposing one accessible access point, and that is on the south side. The stoop on the north and the porch on the west are going to be stairs.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's it, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Counselor Jensen?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Director, as we go forward and this group of people raises this money, like I think they're going to do, and we do all of these improvements, how much is this going to cost to maintain? And what's that plan for maintenance and repair of this property, so that we don't get into this, you know, problem again?
Yeah, that's a fair question. Obviously, the, having the new improvements put on, obviously will give us significant life, whether it be the siding. But there will be times where, you know, it'll have to be painted, there'll have to be regular maintenance on it. And I think now that we've invested this and, and know that we've got a, you know, a $300,000 improvement going, obviously, we're going to maintain it going forward and realizing that, you know, we're going to extend the life of it as long as we possibly can. I don't know the exact cost, I guess.
On the phone or in chambers? Counselor Brecky?
If I could just kind of have the final word. I do want to thank all the committee members. It's been just a pleasure to be a part of this group. As you can see now, their enthusiasm is infectious and their desire is admirable, and it's just been, it's, they're like lightning bolts, working with them. And it's been just a lot of, it's, I've just really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working with them, and it, and I've just got a lot of confidence in them. And I just want to thank everybody, because again, there's been countless hours even put into this presentation. When you look at this 3D work, that, that's hours and hours and hours that Sarah DeWitt is putting into it, the fundraising group, all of them.